Building and grounds to order, will the clerk please read the roll?
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here. Motion to approve the agendas proposed?
Second.
A motion to approve the agenda, those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have an agenda.
Mr. Chairman, there's a request, move or request by Charles Nichols to purchase a 12 by 14 utility shed that was acquired by the City of Waterloo through the 658 process located at 3126 Franklin Street for $100 to be approved.
Second.
A motion in proper second for the request by Mr. Charles Nichols, any discussion on that?
Well, we probably should have Mr. Western give us a little overview, I think.
Chris Western, the applicant, I believe, lives, I think, right behind this particular house. And it's just an old shed, it's been there since 1955, it's about 212 square feet. It's in bad disrepair, he's gonna have to shingle it and re-site it. So we thought the $100 was probably pretty fair.
So he's doing us a favor by removing it, then?
Yeah, they'd have to be demoed anyway, so.
Chris, you said 212 square feet?
Yeah.
And that, that doesn't look right.
Well, that's what the county said, sometimes they're not 100% accurate.
Oh, okay.
I know the numbers in the letter are based on what Mr. Nichols quoted. County says it's a little bigger than that.
I mean, by these dimensions, it ought to be like 168 or something, I think, 12 by 14. Well, but anyhow, it's a rickety old shed is what you're telling us, 50, 60 years old?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
We did speak with the attorney's office, since it's a small shed, it's readily removable by non-big equipment, he didn't have to treat it as real property, so we didn't have to have a hearing.
Okay.
Any additional conversation? Those in favor of the request by Mr. Charles Nichols, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, we will take that request.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion to adjourn, those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. $0.66 for replacement and reprogramming of engine ECM. Cultural and arts, $2,580 for painting of three exterior signs at the Waterloo Center for the Arts. Culture and arts, $14,229 for carpet replacement in her which rooms, events, office suite, Hope Martin Theater, box office suite, Quanis River Room, Cedar Lookout and Dressing Room. Sanitation not to exceed $25,000 for 35, 65 and 95 gallon garbage carts. Waste management, $2,992 for two cartograph subscription renewals for Seamom computer program.
Second, we have a motion and second, is there discussion?
I've got a couple of questions, Madam Chairperson, first on building maintenance. Craig, if I'm reading this correctly, it looks like on one of the, on the first one, we took the low bid, which was Scott's Electric, but then it looks like on the second one, we took the second low bid, which was KNW, is that the way I read that correctly?
That is correct, yes.
Why would we do that?
Well, the, the reason being is, the city-owned properties, we took Scott's Electric being the low bid. Scott's Electric has three employees right now, and KNW has roughly 100. So it was simply a mean of, they can produce the time, 24-hour service, weekends and that kind of stuff, and Scott's Electric can. So that's why we took that at the convention center and not on the rest of the city facilities.
And then also I noticed on the bid, you know, they've got a price for the electrician, then a price for, I forget what, the helper. Do we have any idea, because if, if you factor those numbers in, depending how much is electrician, how much is helper, the highest bid could actually be the lowest, because their helper is like 10 bucks an hour lower than the other two. So do you have any way of being able to determine that beforehand, or?
We do, one thing that is required, we have a journeyman electrician on each job, so they have to have that first person to be there, and then they can have other additional helpers. So that's why we always use the journeyman number, which is that number that we go off first, because they, we have to have that person there, and then we can have other helpers to help that person.
Got you, okay, thank you. And also, yes, also for sanitation, Larry, I know we've, Larry? Mr. Schmidt?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I was having a flashback moment, I'm sorry, Mark. I know we've talked about these garbage carts, you know, and how they don't seem to be holding up. I noticed on that document that we had two different bids, and I assume we're taking the low bid, but is the low bid the bid that these carts aren't holding up? I mean, should we be looking at doing something different, or have you had?
Actually, I'm looking at something different, those are the existing bids that we have, but right now I'm looking at another product that's, it's a rotational molding instead of injection molding, and it's believed that that holds up better in, in colder temperatures.
Okay.
And the fair wear and tear as a result of the cart tipping, so.
Okay, because are we, and I guess this probably is more for Larry, I mean, over the last couple of years, is it my imagination, are we going through these carts quicker than we used to? It just seems like we're replacing them on a more regular basis, my imagination?
We've gone through a lot of carts last year, a lot of it had to do with the weather.
Okay.
We naturally looked at different manufacturers of carts, their specifications as for, as the material they put into them. When City of Waterloo first started getting carts, they were getting auto carts, which were a lot heavier, a lot more durable, everyone's gone to a lighter weight cart, saves them money. They basically don't hold up as well as the others.
So I'm looking at a different process.
Thank you.
Anything else? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
I'm sorry.
I, I just had a question I wanted to ask Kent Schenkel, if I could. Kent, on the culture and arts one, it looked, that you picked Personified, and I was just sort of amazed at the difference in amounts, the bid amounts, I mean, Personified is probably half again as much as the next closest, what's, what's the deal, I mean, why?
Part of it is, depending on the process that they were planning to use, some of them found that it would be better from their standpoint to remove the sign and do it in their shop, which of course adds some additional costs, so part of it was just about how they were going to manage to do the work itself. So this would be done onsite, which, and I think they were very motivated to be competitive. They used to do a lot of work for us, and they haven't for a long time, so I think that was part of the, factored into that as well.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye, opposed, same sign, those items pass. I move that we approve the line item amendments for animal control to budget for revenue anticipated, anticipated to be received from the City of Cedar Falls and related personnel expenses in the amount of $50,164, and also reallocate budgeted expenses to provide for additional personnel in the amount of $11,518.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, have we discussion?
I would like to have a little overview of that, and I'm not sure if that's for Sandy or Michelle, but I'd, kind of where the numbers came from, I thought the Cedar, Cedar Falls numbers were higher than that, and give me a little idea of the $11,500, if you could, please.
This is basically what we're budgeting on right now from our first month that we build them.
Okay.
And I just finished the bill for August today, and with Michelle and Suzie's help, they figured out what part-time wages would be for two part-time officers and a part-time kennel cleaner. One of our part-time officers who helped with kennels too, turned in a resignation a few weeks ago, so she's no longer with us. And the $11,000, that I took $10,000 out of our expense budget, and then with the FICA and IPRs and stuff, that was added on to this.
I'm sorry, say?
The FICA and IPRs, the.
Oh, okay.
Was added on to this. So basically, this is for two part-time officers and a part-time kennel cleaner.
And you said, and there's one part-time person that's resigned? Okay, so prior to this, we have one full-time and four part-time?
We have two part-time right now, two part-time officers and a part-time kennel cleaner, and then we had another.
Okay, so, so with the resignation, we have one full-time?
Yes.
Two part-time?
And a part-time kennel cleaner.
And so after this, we'll have four part-time and two part-time kennel cleaners? Okay, and the, what was the number in the contract for Cedar Falls, wasn't it 75,000 or something like that?
Well, no, we never really came up with a number, I don't believe there was a number in the contract. It was so much per call that we were getting, in the contract, it doesn't have, it doesn't have a set number.
Okay, I thought the, and all I know is what I read in the Courier, but I thought that, you know, part of their decision was that whatever we proposed was gonna be, I thought like 25,000 or 30,000 less than what they were previously paying, and I thought that was a gross number, but, so maybe that was based on the previous year, I mean, I don't remember now.
I think that's what they did, but we're going month by month on our.
Well, I, I, sorry, I calculated that, and I based it off what they said their calls were last year, and I used the rates in the contract. They would not pay us a minimum amount, they only wanted to pay per call, so I done my best estimate based on last year's calls, which, that's the 50,164 you see on here.
Got you.
The rates that are in the contract, but using the number of calls I had last year for each type. So, we'll, we'll see, we hope it's plenty.
Thank you.
And if not, we are getting revenues from them also, because they pay the same pickup fees and boarding to the City of Waterloo as Waterloo residents do, so that's an additional revenue, too.
Thank you.
Anything else? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye, opposed?
Aye.
So two, one vote, that passes. I move that we pay the bills this week, which are $3,364,801.83, 3,364,801.83.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pay the bills, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote with the sign of aye. Aye, opposed, same sign.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, we are adjourned.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. We have a short agenda tonight, but welcome for those of you that are in our audience, and to those that might be watching on our public access television, this is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterloo City Council this September 8th, 2014. Madam Clerk, would you start us with the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Lind?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yep.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Very good, thank you, if you'd all join me, please, in standing for just a moment of silent reflection or prayer. Thank you very much, our pledge of allegiance tonight is going to be led by Ms. Sandy Greco, our Superintendent of Traffic Operations, Sandy, please.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, you may be seated.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
I move that we approve the agenda as proposed, and also the minutes of September 2nd's regular session.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions regarding the agenda or the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign.
Mr. Mayor.
Carries, Mr. Hart?
I move that we receive, place on file and approve the consent agenda, items 1A through B12. Also with the approval of the consent agenda, I move that we make our bills payment, which will be read by our Finance Chair.
The bills this week are $3,364,801.83, 3,364,801.83.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Motion carries, I just want to recognize Carol Gustafson, who has volunteered to be reappointed to our Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission, so Carol's not here, but Carol, if you're watching, thank you very much, those are important jobs, and we appreciate your time very much. Stacy Donnelly has also been, we've got an item on here for a correct expiration date for Stacy for her second term on the General Contractors Board of Licensing, Examiners and Appeals Board, so thanks to Stacy and to Carol, both of them, for their volunteering for our local boards and commissions. Item number 12, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
Two.
Item number two?
Number two, I'm looking.
Go to the end.
Item number two, Mr. Schmidt, please.
Okay, item number two, I'd like to.
Well, you know what, I'm sorry, these are, I'm so used to having hearings, please take the first three, these, we're right into resolutions, so do two, three and four, please.
Item number two is adopting a resolution approving the Iowa Department of Transportation Air Service Development Program grant agreement in the amount of $28,000 with a 20% local match, and the amount of $7,000 for air service consulting and marketing for the Waterloo Regional Airport, and authorize the mayor to execute said document. Item three is adopting a resolution accepting the highway safety contracts with the Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, in the total amount of $56,500 for the fiscal year 2015 Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau grant projects. And item number four is adopting a resolution setting the date of hearing as September 22nd, 2014, to approve a development agreement with Hotel President Partners LP for the redevelopment of 500 Sycamore Street, authorizing a tax rebate schedule at 10 years of 80, 70, 60, 50, 40, 40, 30, 30, and then 20, 20%, matching that of the Cura's schedule, and instruct the city clerk to publish notice.
Second.
Very good, Counsel, do you have any questions regarding Mr. Morrissey?
No, I was, is, well, is it appropriate not to ask, or should we just wait to get the hearing to ask questions about?
There is no hearing, Mr. Morrissey, so if you have a question about any of those three things.
For number four, there's a resolution setting date of hearing.
Oh, to set the date of hearing, yeah, it's up to you, if you have a question, go ahead.
Well, my curiosity, Noel, is.
Go ahead, please.
In reading through that material, it sounded like it was gonna be earmarked for senior citizens 55-plus, and right now there's clientele living in that building that are not 55 years old, but it looks as though there, there may be some kind of problem associated with their method of living or whatever, and I was wondering what was gonna happen with those people who are under age 55.
Sure, Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. Of course, this is a project that has been awarded Iowa Finance Authority Tax Credits through the State of Iowa, so they had to follow regulations for that. They did not specifically go only for senior, for the Iowa IFA tax credit project, however, that is what they believe is a, is a good fit for the building. Their intention is not to kick anyone out, but as vacancies become available, they'll be targeting seniors more than, than this standard non-seniors.
So they're assuring us that, that, that no person's gonna be displaced by this?
That, that is their intention, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Non-seniors.
I get it, Noel, good job.
There you go.
I like that.
Don't know what it's all about, someday, buddy.
Further questions regarding two, three or four? Madam Clerk, there are roll call votes, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good, thank you, let's do the last four resolutions, please, five, six, seven, eight, Ms. Cole?
I move we adopt a resolution setting date of hearing as September 22nd, 2014, to approve requests by Sue Schuman and Sarah Kirstenbrock to vacate the 20-foot platted building line located on Lot 2 of Miller Park Edition at 419 Home Street for the purpose of constructing a three-seasons addition. Six is a resolution setting the date of hearing as September 15th, 2014, to authorize Main Street Waterloo to sell the Regional Business Center building located at 2010-2014 East 4th Street to Seadoyle Properties and rescind Resolution Number 2014-430. Seven is a resolution approving construction plans for sanitary sewer, storm sewer and paving serving Audubon Heights 4th Edition Phase 1, as submitted by Wayne Clausen Engineering and Surveying, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, and Sewage Treatment Agreement, DNR Form 29, that must have been November of 2000, with the Department of Natural Resources and the final acceptance of construction plans, subject to the review and acceptance by the DNR. And eight is a resolution approving award of contract to Boulder Contracting LLC of Grundy Center in the amount not to exceed $591,500, in conjunction with the FY 2014 Flood Control Gatewell Repairs Contract Number 867.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions regarding any of those four?
Quick question on number seven.
Yes, sir, Mr. Jones?
So, as this lays out, everything here, so then the streets has been laid out in the original materials, is that where the placement will be? Because I heard there may have been some opportunity for movement in that.
Eric or Noel, either one, I'm not aware of any, but I don't know. See two heads shaking, but, why don't one of you come to the microphone, if you would, please, and maybe?
Eric Thorst, the danger, I'm not sure, David, I understand the question.
The, the plating that we saw originally on this with the layout of streets, has that changed at all? Or is that?
Oh, I don't think so, they're, they're maybe gonna be doing it in segments, not necessarily the whole preliminary plat at one time, they're gonna be doing it in phases, but.
Okay.
The layouts are the same, sorry.
Anything else, David?
No, that's it.
Anybody else have questions on five, six, seven or eight? Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries, item nine, please.
Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Morrissey.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider and pass for the first time in ordinance amending the 2008 Traffic Code by deleting subsection 14 Hillcrest Road of section 545 Yield Streets, and inserting in lieu thereof a new subsection 14 Hillcrest Road, West Ridgeway Avenue through Hilltop Road, Hillcross Road to Park Lane for yield traffic, Hillcrest Road and Park Lane.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions regarding this? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion's carry.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion suspending the rules.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third time and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please, for the final time?
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes. Yes.
Very good, the motion carries, item 10, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
Move to instruct traffic operations superintendent to prepare plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera, for safe routes to school, Irving Elementary and Traffic Signal Project at West 5th Street and Baltimore Street.
Second.
Very good, Counsel, do you have any questions regarding this at all, Mr. Schmidt? No, okay, okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive and file plans, specifications, form of contract.
Second.
Again, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution preliminary approving plans, specifications, form of contract.
Second.
Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Our motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution setting date of hearing as September 15th, 2014, instruct city clerk to publish notice, a plan, specifications, form of contract, et cetera, for the IODOT letting, which is on September 16th, 2014.
Second.
Very good, thank you, Madam Clerk, please, roll call.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good, that motion carries, and we're on to number 11, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
Move to instruct Public Works Director to prepare specifications, bid documents, et cetera, for the purchase of two pickup trucks for the sanitation department.
Second.
Counsel, questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive and file specifications, bid documents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution preliminarily approving specifications, bid documents, et cetera.
Second.
And that is a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution set a dating bid, setting date of bid opening as September 25th and hearing as October 6th, 2014, instruct city clerk to publish notice of specifications, bid documents, et cetera, in taking a bid.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good, the motions carry, thank you, Counsel. Ladies and gentlemen, that's the end of our regularly scheduled business tonight, again, short meeting, so it is time for oral commentations, or oral commentations, oral presentations. Please come to the microphone and give us your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Jim Chapman, 224 Birch, say, after we get that money, that $50,000 from Cedar Falls, and we change the line item or the budget to $11,000, are we still gonna be in the black? Are we in the red, or where are we on this?
We're in, in the budget that was submitted for that program, Jim, we are operating within that budget.
That's, that's within the budget.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Randy here at 111 High End, just a couple, little quick items, I'm guessing that the monies that are going now into animal control, that would bring the budget up to somewhere around the area of 300,000?
that would bring the budget up to somewhere around the area of $300,000?
I don't know, Randy. We're...
Okay. It would be nice to know what that is.
Okay.
I have it if you...
Okay.
Michelle Wade and your chief financial officer, that'll bring the total expense budget to just under $295,000, but after subtracting out potential revenues, the tax-supported budget is just under $219,000.
And this represents some new employees, it sounds like. And that would help to address, I have what was brought to my attention today, that there were people who had called and scheduled to pick up their dog there, and nobody was there to meet them at the scheduled time, and they were standing there in the rain waiting for the dog. So, this will eliminate those kinds of problems, I'm guessing.
I'm guessing so, also.
Okay. And one last thing. This is for Thursday, just so everybody remembers. Thursday is Patriots' Day. Fly your flags, half-staff.
Very good, thank you.
Steve Murphy, 124 Terrace Drive. I'm trying to get an accurate feel for how far behind we are on garbage carts. I've had a couple people that have approached me that have been waiting for a cart since May. So, if I could get some numbers and get them out to the public so they can understand how many weeks they should be waiting now, how far we are behind. I don't care about the expense right now. How far behind are we in replacing damaged carts? Mr. Rice, Mr. Smith?
Steve, I'll get you something. I don't know if you can tell him right now, Mark, but I know there is a situation where we've had a terrible time getting our carts. There were some customers back several weeks ago that we finally did get some carts that got them delivered to them. If you have some current information, go ahead, Mark.
Mark Rice, Public Works Director. Right now, we're right in the ballpark of 600 carts, and that's not necessarily that are owed, but those are exchanges, wheels replaced, what have you. So, and we're working to address that.
So, what kind of timeframe, 600 carts, is that six weeks or 10 weeks? I mean, how many can you do a week?
Right now, we're looking at six weeks.
So, anything, anyone that's been waiting more than six weeks, they should...
They should contact me.
Okay.
Well, I'm going to be clear on this. That's not, I understood that our reason for being behind was that we couldn't take delivery of the carts, not that we couldn't get them out quick enough. Is there a combination...
We took delivery of 475 carts, and now we're trying to get them out to the customers.
Okay.
So, it's just a main power issue.
But we were behind considerably behind on receiving carts.
We were.
That's what got us behind in the first place. We couldn't get them.
Right.
Okay.
So, that's where we're at as of today.
Six weeks.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay. And then if I could ask, thank you very much. I appreciate that. And then a final request is I've sent, I think, everybody on the council some information about trapnutter release, and I guess as a citizen, I have a travel schedule that's kind of tough. I'd ask if I could get extra time before, knowing that that's going to be on the agenda. If I don't know until it's on a Thursday for the following Monday, I sometimes can't alter my travel schedule. So, when that's going to come back on the agenda, if I could have additional time to maybe try and move some travel around, that would just be a nice to have.
I will put that on, I'll make a note of that, Steve, and I don't know when that's going to be on. The only thing we've ever done to date is ask permission to get a grant. We don't even know if we're going to get a grant, not. We don't, we're a long ways from adopting that as policy. So, we will keep it in mind.
Long way from dropping the release, but we're currently taking our cats that we are picking up, and we're taking them somewhere, and I think we're, are we not spaying those cats somewhere in Cedar Rapids? So, we're bearing the expense of a spay right now.
Yes.
And then we're...
Wait a minute, I'm sorry. No, we're not spaying cats. No, we're not doing...
But we're spaying cats. And then, so that's our expense on the spaying, and then we give them to another shelter that they can sell or get rid of for a donation or something. So, I think the conversation needs to be had. I mean, why are we spending our money to spay a cat that we then give away to someone that sells or gives it away in exchange for a donation? It's kind of a weird deal.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for your time.
David Dreyer, 3145 West 4th Street. I guess I haven't seen much happening on, in the paper or whatever, on what are the consequences for the San Martin debacle with the golf course, et cetera? And going for the lowest bid, we always do that, and I guess that's a national mandate. When I was in Europe, they always threw out the lowest and the highest bid, and they took the guy in the middle because he didn't come back and ask for extra money. He had something built in, and doing business with the city attorney, I saw that in the paper. Has anything been talked about or resolved with that? Because that sounds like a conflict of interest to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. I will offer one quick answer to the San Martin issue. It's in the court system, and it could be there for some time. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir.
Bill Kamier, 526 Home Park Boulevard. You can all relax. I'm not here to argue about nothing tonight, so I'm not here to entertain you. I'm here about to talk about entertainment, though. I'm sure you're all aware, and I've been out doing my thing this weekend, about Emily West. She's on American Idol, American Idol, and she will be there tomorrow night. Her husband, her dad is an ex-police man on the Waterloo, retired from the Waterloo Police Department. I think it would behoove, and I've had a long talk with the superintendent of schools. I had a meeting with her last week. The schools are going to be doing in the next couple of days everything they can to recruit votes for her tomorrow night. She's in the finals. She's, there's 12 people going to be in the show tomorrow night from 8:00 to 10:00. And out of that, on Wednesday night, they're going to eliminate that down to 6:00. She's awesome. I would suggest that you look at that program. I would suggest that you encourage everybody you know in Waterloo to vote for her, and you can vote 10 times, and you can vote on the phone. Just dial the number, listen to what they got to say, hang up the phone after you answer their question, and push redial, and you can do that 10 times. Right now, I'm assured of people that I know that I've got about 300 votes for her tomorrow night. The reason that I'm so concerned is I think that behooves all of us that she's from Waterloo, Iowa. She's graduated from West High School, and it's a positive thing. It's not a negative thing. And I think that all of us could do whatever we can do tomorrow to recruit all the votes you can vote for her tomorrow night. I think it would, you know, it's, to me, it's a real positive thing for Waterloo, and I think we'd all benefit by her getting into the finals next week and hopefully winning those finals. So, that's the reason I'm here tonight, is just to encourage everybody and do what you can to get votes for her tomorrow night. It's really critical because she's either going to go from 12 to 6. So, that's my speech tonight. American Got Talent, right. It's on KWWL, and it's a great program, and she's against some tough talent.
Thanks, Bill.
So, whatever you can do.
Very, very, very sound words, and thank you for bringing that up because that is, it is, it's fun to watch. I've known her since she was a little kid, so it's a fun deal, and I'll be watching, and I'm sure a lot of people will. So, thanks for reminding us of that.
Yes, sir. Well, who would have thought they'd ever hear Bill Kamier talking about America's Got Talent at a city council meeting? That's worth 10 votes right there. But I'm here to talk about something positive as well. I've actually been in Washington, DC for several weeks, but I was catching up on some of the Courier articles, and I saw a piece, I don't know if Tim wrote it, but the Lou Henry Hoover Project is moving forward, the park over there by the Grouse Museum, and I just want to say, I think that's absolutely fabulous. I went to Hoover Middle School. That's where I first learned about Lou Henry Hoover being from Waterloo. When I worked for Governor Branstad, I was a liaison to the Herbert Hoover Presidential Library. I've gotten to meet Lou Henry and President Hoover's grandchildren, and they couldn't be more proud, especially of President Hoover, but of Lou Henry as well. And as we know, first ladies sometimes don't get the recognition that they deserve, and I just think that's great. It's something I've personally wanted to see happen for a long time. I know some people in the community have been working really hard on it. I want to thank them for that. And I would just encourage you guys to sign wherever you need to sign and give them whatever they need to get that project rolling because that's another positive thing that'll bring people to the community. So, thanks for that, and have a good evening.
Thanks, Josh. Very good. David, the rules are the rules. Just, come on. What would you like to say? It's not a different, I mean, you can't keep standing, and these, just so you know, these aren't rules that I've adopted. These are rules that were adopted by the council.
Stand, Mayor.
Okay, so go ahead.
Talking about the America's Got Talent, I'm a member of Legion, and in Legion Magazine, there was an article about a guy from Greenfield that has the Freedom Rock. He's looking for a rock in all 99 counties. I live near 4th and Ridgway, and there's that nice huge rock there. Would that bring people to town? We need to talk to this gentleman and get him to maybe, you know, his rock at Greenfield is fantastic, and that's a fantastic rock to paint something on for us.
Very good. Thanks, Dave. And, you know, it chagrins me. You're welcome, Dave, to have to try to stifle people's comments. It's not my intent, ladies and gentlemen. It never has been.